Everybody, welcome to our July 18th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners Budget Workshop. We will call our meeting to order. We will first start off with our invocation, which will be a moment of silence this morning, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all please rise. Thank you. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, with our agenda this morning, we will have a 9:05 public and we will have a 5:05 or whichever comes first this afternoon. There are no additional items. There are no consent agenda items. We need to, are there any additional items at all that we, no? Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I will move approval of the agenda.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First thing we'll take up this morning is public comment. The first public speaker we have this morning is Mr. Circus. Followed by Mr. Circus is Tom Campini. Mike, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Hope you all had a good weekend. I believe your young lady passed out a small little three-page packet. This was the front cover of it. Pages two and three are just a couple considerations as I looked at the budget, maybe to think about in future budgeting processes, just to make things a little more transparent. But really, I'm here this morning to take a look at the first page of that packet and excuse me from reading directly off the paper, but you guys can follow along as well. On page 88, Martin County's debt policy. Martin County has a policy to ensure net bonded debt does not exceed $900 per person. Currently, total outstanding county debt is enumerated $146,556,952, or equivalent to $919.27 per resident. I'd like to suggest this year that $900 cap be set as a total cap of outstanding budget. Not necessarily a policy change, just an objective of the year, since we are in a relatively strong financial position. To make that work, we'd have to increase debt service by just over $3 million. If you take a look at the reserve funds, we're looking to grow reserves by a little over $14 million coming into this year. So what I'd like to see is that we take from that $14 million going into reserves, take that additional $3 million to put into debt service, which means about $11 million going into reserves. We will end the financial year roughly $80 million in the bank, and we will simultaneously be able to drop our net debt per resident under that $900 mark without cutting a single penny. Obviously, bonus round, if you guys can cut and put into debt service or put into reserves, that is always nice. But I would just suggest that while we're in a financially strong position, we get our debt under $900 per head, and we could do that without cutting anything. Thank you.
Sir.
Mr. Campini, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm here to speak as the Prab chairman this year, and I think we have a pretty good budget, though it does go up by almost 15%. The reason for the increase is because staff, and the Prab has agreed to this, that it would be better to hire a private company to pick up the garbage and do some cleaning than to have our own staff do so, because there are over 3,000 service requests for our parks. You could have them pick up garbage or do service requests. So I'm asking you to approve it, which is really a flat budget except for this item, because eventually, we're going to end up hiring people to do it, which only brings our budget even higher for future time, for future. The other thing I just want to say briefly, I did look at the Palmar meeting, and I want to congratulate Commissioner Jenkins for keeping his temper and for Ms. Woods for doing such an excellent job with what they are doing to try to control that board again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public wish to address us, just a public general comment at 9:05? Seeing none, back to the board. Commissioner Jenkins, do you have anything for us this morning before we start?
I don't know if I kept my temper, but.
I was at that meeting.
Interesting description.
Yeah. I didn't see much restraint.
Yeah. Anyway, I didn't jump over the dais, I guess.
You should have.
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Mr. Heatherington?
I'm all set.
Mr. Campy?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Hurd?
I'm set.
I am as well. Mr. Donaldson, before we start. Ms. Woods? Fantastic. A great start. Okay, this morning, we will start off our budget workshop with the County Commissioners' fiscal year 2022-2023 budget workshop meetings. The budget workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday today, July 18th, and if necessary, we will continue till tomorrow, July 19th, Tuesday. The purpose of this meeting is to establish our tentative millage rate, as if you have been involved in this before or watched this before, that's what we do. Tentative millage rate will be set at the end of the day unless the meeting is continued until tomorrow. Again, that will be Tuesday, July 19th. Don Donaldson.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, we have to present to you the proposed budget for fiscal year '23. I think it's significant in that the county did have a healthy growth in its taxable values, sufficient to allow us to do a millage reduction of almost 3%. I think you'll find that the budget prepared was, as Mr. Campini put out, only those items that were considered necessary additions. There was a few items added that were reduced from last year's budget that we put back in. But other than that, I think Martin County is in a good position this year, and with the current property valuations, I think this will continue on at least into next year. Next year's budget may be challenging if we're in the midst of a recession, but I think this budget will help us prepare for that in our current standing. So Ms. Manning's going to go through a slide presentation on just kind of overview of the various items, and then following that, we'll go into the constitutional officers with our sheriff being first.
Fantastic. And I see that the sheriff has joined us out back, so when we get through Ms. Manning's presentation, we will get on to his budget first. Ms. Manning, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Jennifer Manning, OMB Director. And of course, Mr. Donaldson mentioned that I will be going over a slide presentation. It'll have a brief overview of the major revenues, as well as the tentative budget, total expenditures and total revenues, the basis for our budget, as well as prior year impacts and recommendations. So the first set of revenues that I would like to go over is the local revenues, and as you can see, all our revenues exceed projections, and I'll just briefly go over a couple of them, so I don't go into every one of them. For example, our ad valorem, we're budgeted at 95% based on state statutes, and so our ad valorem, the major part of our, the majority of our ad valorem is collected between November through March. And so we're at 100%, 101%. Our impact fees are also, it's hard to project the impact fees because they're collected at building issuance, permit issuance, and those, most of those impact fees are coming from the city store, as well as some from Ocean Breeze. So it exceeds the projections, and they're also not budget planned until we actually collect them, because it's very , we don't know, you know, what's going to happen or turnover. As far as building permit fees, we are seeing the, single family homes are kind of stable, but we are having a lot of permits, so that, the building permit fees are trending much higher. Ambulance fee is just slightly over, you know, their fees are going up, I think in July, so we're seeing more of a collection. This is collectioned up until June, so, you know, they're trending higher as well. Tourist development fees is phenomenal, they, you know, with a robust collection in bed tax, you know, we're at 55%. You know, my credit, of course, is to the staff and their, you know, advertising and promotions that they do. I think that is making us successful as well. So as far as development review fees, those are also trending higher.
Jennifer, can I stop you?
Yes, you can.
The one thing I would add on about the tourist development tax, and you're correct, however, and I say this at our TDC meetings all the time, it is the staff and it is the hotels that are collecting this revenue. They are as challenged as anybody is in the industry for hiring people, keeping people, employing people, and to see the kind of numbers that they're turning out and getting done, given the challenges that they have handling, all that's in front of them, it's amazing job at what they're doing and the collections that they have made. So I just think it's important to point out and express our support and continued good thoughts for what they're doing out there, because it's interesting at our TDC meetings, you know, when Ed Griffith talks about the shores and talks about how they're doing and the challenges that they have, it's really amazing what they're accomplishing. So again, thank you for pointing that out, but just thought I'd add a little bit extra to that.
And of course, next is the franchise fees, and that's based on consumption as well as rate changes. You know, the FPL has increased their rates, so we're seeing changes in that, and probably more electric cars are being used, and so we're seeing an increase, they're trending higher. Sale for splash, they actually collected lion's share of their funding as well during the summertime, so they are exceeding their expectation. As far as our interest income is concerned, the interest income has lowered quite a bit because when we look at 2020, we collected $6.6 million. So as our, because of the current economic situation, our investments, as they mature, we're getting less, so we're projecting a lot less. So even last year, we collected, you know, like $1.8 million. This year, we're at $1 million. So we're not collecting as much interest, so we don't depend on it as well. The next few slides, I'm not going to go over all the slides, it's just for informational purpose, and it's historical collection for all those local revenues that I just presented, and so it's at the board's discretion, they can review it, and so there's like all the slides that I've shown you, you can see the difference in the tourists, as well as franchise fees and sale for splash. The next set of revenues is, did I go too fast? Do you want to go back up? Okay, we'll go back up. Okay, so as you can see, the ad valorem since 2016 compared to 2022, and that's just normal because it's based on the adopted budget. And the impact fees, as you could see, back in 19, we collected $6.8 million, and in '21, $6.3 million, and that's, you know, the lion's share of those impact fees are, you know, credited to the city store and Ocean Breeze, so. Building permit fees has, you know, trend higher in the last, you know, I would say the last three years, have been going significantly higher, and we expect it to continue maybe for another year, so, depending on the housing market and the permits. Ambulance fees are also trending much higher over the last, you know, since 2016, so, and we expect it to go up even more. Tourist development, we just spoke about that in terms of, you know, when you look back in 2016 where they were at $2 million, and now in 2021, it was $3.3 million, and it'll probably hit $3.6 million by the end of the year, or $3.4. And development review fees is just pretty much not, it, you know, we do get a lot of applications, but, you know, it's growing little by little. Oops. And franchise fee, you can see the growth in the franchise fee, it's been, you know, growing over time. We started out, I think, we started with $6.7 million in the beginning, and then we increased it to 8.7, and then in 2023, over $9 million. And sale for splash, as, you know, we just mentioned that, you know, we did see a low year in 2020, but it started growing because of the COVID, so then it's back to normal. Okay, next set of revenues, so there are state revenues, and those revenues are projected by the state, but also, I am very conservative when it comes to projecting those revenues because of past experience. So the, I follow some of their trends, but at the same time, I use historical collections. So when we look at communications tax, you know, it's been decreasing over time, so it's just about what I've been projecting, because the state might project, you know, 15.5, you know, 1.55 million, and I project 1.4. The state revenues, the revenue sharing, that's based on cigarette tax and also sales and use taxes, and we only get a percentage of those taxes, and those have been trending very high. The half-cent sales tax, it's, you know, it's two months behind in collection, but those sales tax has been trending much higher, significantly higher, and that's because of the inflation. And when you look at the inflation, people are paying more money, more, they're paying higher price, therefore leading to higher sales tax, but that, we have to be very cautious about that because as the inflation gets higher, people are going to start spending on non-taxable items. So we cannot get excited about it. It'll be residual funding at the end of the year, but I'm very conservative when it comes to budgeting.
And Jennifer, on that sales tax, it's only up to the first 5,000, right? So if you purchase a car or something, it's only up to 5,000, and then after that is, it goes back to 6%?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. The fuel taxes, they've been steady for quite some time over the last 10 years. The average increase is about 1%. So with that being said, and of course, because of the electric cars and then people are teleworking more, more, working from home, we're not seeing as much, we're not seeing a good increase. It's actually declining, if you look at it. Over time, it's just going to get worse. So with that in mind, I have to start, I started in the last three years, moved, shifting some of the costs to the road MSU to help to mitigate that issue, and we're going to see more and more shifting of those fundings to tax dollars. The, this is just a graphical, like the others, of all the collections for the communications tax, and as you can see, back in 2016, we were collecting about $1.7, $1.8 million, and now we're projecting 1.5 roughly. And revenue sharing, you know, that has been pretty, you know, consistent until, you know, of course, we're in the inflationary periods right now, and then it'll drop off, I think, and it'll still be high in 2023, but then I can see it, you know, falling off. The local government half-cent sales tax, as you can see, in 2016, we collected $15 million, and we're projected to be at least $19 million this year. And it's fuel tax, as I spoke about it, as you can see, it's just been a steady, it has not increased over time, and we know why. The next set of revenues is enterprise funds, and that includes water and sewer, and they are trending quite high, and, you know, kudos to our Connect to Protect program, so we have more customers, we have, so there's more consumption, and we know the program's working. And then we have the garbage collection, which is similar to the taxes just collected, you know, during the first six months of the year. And then the golf course, you know, it's trending, it's higher, and we expect it to get higher, you know, based on all the renovations, the great renovation that's been done, and then, you know, when everything's completed, we all get a lot of reception. And this, again, is a graphical, of the graph, graph of all the utility charges and the golf course. So now, after all that, I'm going to just go into the budget development, and we're required by Florida statute, and the county administrator has the powers and the duties to prepare and submit to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration and adoption of an annual budget, a capital budget, and a capital program. The FY '23 tentative budget is submitted during the workshop, is a working document, so changes can be made throughout the workshop. And the schedule, as Commissioner Smith mentioned earlier, we're scheduled until tomorrow, if necessary. If not, we will complete it today. So the total revenues for the tentative budget is 500, and I'm just going to round it out, 559 million, and those revenues include ad valorem taxes, we have local and state shared revenues, we have grants, assessment from impact fees and assessments from utilities. We also have franchise fees, which represent 10%, I mean 2%, and miscellaneous revenues, which are rents and assets and so forth. Our total expenditures, of course, is balanced in the budget, 559 million, and those expenditures includes personal services, which is 20% of our budget, operating expenditures, which is 29%, the capital expenditure is 9%, debt service is 4%, transfer to our constitutional officers is 18%, and transfers in reserves is 20%. On April 5th, the Board tentatively approved the capital project, capital improvement plan, and the budget for the countywide budget increased approximately 12%, and the total revenues generated from the countywide increase is 13 million. This is just a chart of all the increases for the taxing authority. As you can see, the districts, District 1 increased 13%, 2, 5%, 3, 27%, and that's because of the redistricting, so we're seeing a higher percent on that end. 4 was 7%, District 5 was 8%. Hutchinson Island MSU was 13%, Fire MSU was 11%, and the Parks, Roads, and Stormwater was 13% increase. So the budget development is based on quite a few factors. The tentative budget was based on the July 1 taxable values. We're also considered, we fund all the constitutional requests. The department budgets maintain the same level of service as FY '22, with the exception of the cost of doing business, so any kind of increase in the contracts or electricity or prior board direction is included in the budget. Also, we had seven full-time equivalent positions that were requested. Those are for either to, for increased level of service or workload. Five of those positions are requested from the utilities and solid waste department, and one position is shared with tourism and ecosystem, and the seventh position is for fire rescue administration. And of course, I mentioned the capital projects. The total ad valorem increase is $18.9 million. Of that, the countywide portion of those dollars is 72%, and 28% is for fire, stormwater, district, and road MSU, and special district. The capital project, as I mentioned, was approved in April, but tentatively approved by the Board, and those increases include parks, capital projects were $300,000, fire rescue had a small $24,000 increase, building $195,000, law enforcement $248,000, roads $550,000, as Mr. Donaldson mentioned, that we had, we replaced some of the ad valorem that was removed from the budget, coastal was $75,000, and then ecosystem was a reduction. So it's a total of $1.3 million. For the countywide increases, and that includes the capital and the operational, it includes the constitutional officers' requests for $8.5 million. We have a CRA obligation for the city and the county of $1.3 million. The property insurance increase, $700,000. The enhanced waste bin system, as mentioned earlier as well, is $400,000. Staffing and FRS impact is $600,000. Oops, I, sorry, I saw that, it should be 1,000. Okay. That's just, go ahead.
What was the enhanced waste bin service?
Okay, so Parks and Recreation is going to hire, yes, okay. And this should be $600,000. That was a typo. And our cost of doing business for, like, for gasoline, utility, and contract obligations is $244,000. So that equates to roughly $11.8 million. And this is just a graph showing how it's, how the funds are divided. So as you can see, 66% is for the constitutional officers, and this is only countywide. 10% is for the CRAs, 5% for property insurance, enhanced service waste bins is 3%, staffing is 5%, cost of doing business is 2%, and 9% for capital projects. So as far as the ad valorem impact for the MSCUs, and as mentioned, parks, fire, roads, special district and district MSCUs, we have fire contract obligations, it's 2.8. We set aside some funding for replacement of their equipment of $782,000. There's the taxing authorities for the CRA, which is $502,000. The cost of doing business is for medical, fuel, and other, and equipment is $487,000. The PATH FTE from ecosystem is $35,000. Then we have reserves and salaries. FRS impacts is $598,000. The staff redistribution, I mentioned earlier about having the gas tax not be growing as much, is $171,000. Landscape, site irrigation and maintenance for asphalt repairs is $164,000. Mowing and landscape and $188,000, and district MSU, $73,000. The FRS impact for regular, for regular employees is 10%. The special risk is 8%, 11% for the elected officials, 9% for senior management, and 1% for drop. So this increase is mainly for the unfunded liability that they have. So we pay our regular rate plus the unfunded portion, and it's been going up every year. The FY '23 tentative budget, we were required by fiscal policy to have a 10% reserves in the general fund, and for FY 2023, we will have a slightly higher reserves, and we also try to set aside reserves when we can for other funds. The building and utilities maintain operational reserves, and they are required to as well, but for building, they have up to one-year reserves for operations and three months for utilities and solid waste. This is our chart, a breakdown of all the reserves that are in the various funds, and we can see the general fund reserves, we have 17.7 for restricted. We have salaries, we have for supervisor election, we have a contingency reserve, outlay for future capital, and that's 20 million. So overall, with all the funds that are there, we have 82 million, roughly 83 million in reserves. Did you want me to go over all of them, or, okay? So in summary, we just, I just wanted to say that the proposed budget includes full funding for the constitutional officers' requests. Our capital improvement was tentatively approved. We're investing in employees, so we're making sure that we're providing a fair salary so we can attract talented workforce and other employees. And we'll spread funding for the property insurance, CRAs, FRS, unfunded liability. We have included any increases during the fiscal year FY '22 based on prior board direction, and of course, the most important, maintain the level of service for various departments. With that, my presentation has finished. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Board members, any questions?
Very good.
Huh?
Not at this time.
Jennifer, I would say one thing about reserves, and Michael brings up an interesting comment, certainly on reserves. Our general fund reserve was what, 17 million?
17.7.
No? No? I would only share this with everybody, that in Francis and Jean, we went through 8 million in reserves in one shot. It took us seven years to get back to that level, and partly because we entered into the early beginnings of the recession, and the revenues were not what we would have liked to have seen to get us back. So it seems like a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but in, in the blink of an eye with a storm or two storms, we have been 10 years, knock on wood, since we've had anything significant, but we run in 10-year cycles, not that I'm suggesting that it's going to be a bad summer, but the reserves are significantly important, I think, to keep as robust as we can keep them without tampering with too much of the rest of the budget. So, Michael, interesting observations and stuff, and certainly swirling in my mind your thoughts, so we may touch on that a little bit later on, but I just thought I would share with you, for those of you who don't remember back then how long it took us to get back to where we felt we were sort of back on terra firma again.
And could I mention?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the debt service, a portion of it, a large portion of it is enterprise funds. We only have 90 million that, we don't have any bonded debt. We have 90, 90 million that's funded through other sources, yeah.
Okay. So if there aren't any further questions on Jennifer's overview and comments, we will go to the constitutional offices. First up will be the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. So it's.
Sheriff, good morning. Welcome, as always.
Good morning.
Yeah, I'm looking.
So good to see everybody. I know this is a big day for you all, and certainly a big day for Martin County, but Chairman Smith, good to see you this morning, Vice Chair Campi, Commissioner Hurd, Commissioner Jenkins, Commissioner Heatherington, what a pleasure to be here. County Administrator Don Donaldson, you're still here. Yeah, we, we've got the over-under on how long you, I'm just kidding. We're really on personal, on a personal level, very, very happy that you're there, and we trust you and believe in you, and Sarah Wood, it's always so good to be here, and you've been so helpful this last year with ordinances and, and everything, and then Jennifer Mannings, wherever she slipped off to.
Excellent presentation.
Appreciate her and all her hard work. You know, I stand before you, I was thinking this morning, this is the 10th time since I, I was fortunate enough to get elected sheriff that I've stood here and talked about.
Been 10 years, really, already?
Been, yeah, my 10th budget, am I right, Kevin?
That seems really hard to be.
I think it's my 10th budget. So I was recollecting how many taxpayer dollars I've spent in the last 10 years, and I thought not to share that figure here, here this morning, but I was thinking, as I was looking at Ms. Manning's pie chart and all the colors, I, I literally had an epiphany. Every single color on there, if you got granular and expanded the pixels out for illustration purposes, those are taxpayer dollars. That, that, unless you've been in your position or mine and had to spend other people's money, I don't think the average person comprehends just how much of a weight that is. And so to that end, we began our budget process months ago, beyond time, and from the very beginning, we, we, I kept hammering, hammering, hammering. This is not our money, this is taxpayers' money, we're not entitled to anything, we have to, we have to be very careful. And so I really do think we've, we've done as, as good a job as we could to not have extraneous things. When we started the budget process, the way we do it, and this is not going to be a long presentation, there are others here, but we, we ask every commander, and I'd like to introduce my staff now that helps so much, Chief John Budensee, Major Cummings, who's managing corrections for us now, and then of course CFO Youngblood, and all my captains but one, and some of my lieutenants are here. But as, as we got together and collaborated, we knew that we couldn't put in for everything everybody thought would be good for us to have. So I think our first blush when we sat down with that was 98?
98 million.
98 million. And we went to work, we just really went to work, and nobody asked for anything, that was just fun stuff, everything was equipment, it was additional manpower, women power, you know, we did the best we could to pare it down and not leave us hurt. I can tell you this, in a clear conscience, before you and the taxpayers of Martin County, there's not one budget request sheet, and every single one of them is available, that everyone that goes into this budget is available. There really isn't one that I'm embarrassed about, there isn't one that you could pick up, Commissioner Hurd, and ask me, well, why this? And I think I could, I could make you satisfied that it's, it's the right thing to have. So with that, Kevin, if you'll, we'll take a quick look, our overall budget is 86 million, and you see the rest there. The drivers this year are similar to drivers in the past, except the drivers have gotten faster and bigger. The drivers of our increase, we have Florida retirement, the Florida retirement system went up, yours went up, ours is all special risk, it went up, that's beyond my control, I have to pay it, we have to pay it. Anytime I say I have to pay it, I, I get where the tax dollars come from, and you're the appropriators. Our, our health insurance premiums went up. Now, we've, we've been flat for years, so we, we share the cost with our employees, ours, our share went up as, as far as Sheriff's Office, and then their individual plans went up also, and then we negotiated with the PBA over a period of a couple months, I think, and, and that increase is in there. Another big driver this year, we've talked about, so I won't get into, is body worn cameras and information technology advancements. Kevin, the body warns were 1 point.
1 million.
1 million, yeah, .09. So that's in there, and I've said this before, I think, and I don't believe in reincarnation, but I could be tempted in this one case, I do think that men that were hung for horse thieves back in the 1800s are reincarnated into IT salesmen. And they figured it out, they, they layered in there, and there, there's no getting out of it. You're stuck, you touched that, you're stuck. Commissioner?
Was that one you worked on last night, or did that just come out, like, was that just a stream of consciousness?
Yeah, that's a stream of consciousness. If I worked on this, it would be a lot worse.
Wow, that was good, that was, that was.
But it's, I think that's true, I don't think I'd do any dishonor to anybody's theology with that one. And then the inflationary price increase, I don't know why I would even have to mention that, we're all getting hammered, you're getting hammered, I'm getting hammered. I just got back from Wyoming, and throughout the country, gas prices, food, especially feeding an 11-year-old grandson, I contemplated looking up child abuse laws in Wyoming to see if not feeding him every day was absolutely a violation, but everywhere, it's just, so you see it here, we're just a micro of the, of the macro, and, and so that's not a very long presentation. I, I thought, and I shared with some of my staff, I wanted to be faithful to people that are listening, that don't get to see, or, I mean, they can see it, they don't see the budget. You all have the budget, you've seen every request, staff has gone over it, and, and so I'm, I'm going to stop there and just see if I can answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, any questions for the sheriff? Commissioner Campi?
Thank you, Sheriff. Not so much a question about the budget, but can you give us an update on the body worn cameras? It's been several months, I know that we, you were saying you were going to try to get into it, but there was a phased-in approach, how's it going?
We, we are in the middle of expecting, not, in the not-too-distant future, to get our first delivery. We couldn't start putting cameras on anybody until we had the infrastructure built out, so we still, and we couldn't go about hiring anybody to manage the public records request until you give us your blessing today. So I would say this would be the final stage, if you, if you approve the budget, we'll know we can afford the infrastructure that it will take.
Thank you.
Senator?
Yes.
Can I ask anything?
Commissioner Hurd.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hurd, sorry.
Yeah, Sheriff, over, I've looked at sheriff budgets for 20 years now, and I have opposed some of them, and I always want to look back, and I make Ms. Manning each year prepare 10 years back, a look, both at budgets and personnel, and I'm looking at your 10-year trend, and they're real consistent and real conservative over 10 years, so I'm pleased that you've managed to hold the line for 10 years.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Campi?
Motion to tentatively accept the sheriff's budget.
We have a motion, and we have a second. As always, Sheriff, I, with the rest of the board, and for those who won't say anything, we, we live in a great place, and part of it's because of what you and your staff do. And, and even though that, that number can be daunting sometimes to have to deal with on your end, I'm sure, it all goes to allowing us to live in the great place we live, and a super, super safe place that we live in. So I thank you very much for all you do, as well as your staff that makes such a great place.
Agreed.
Commissioner Jenkins?
You were the first conversation I had with regard to the budget, and after I pulled myself up off the floor and started reviewing everything else in, in real life, I agree with Commissioner Hurd, you, you've done the best you can. This is one of the most important items in our budget that, that, that we deal with, so I fully intend to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins.
Anything for the sheriff?
If I could just close with this thought, I, I would be remiss if I didn't brag on my staff, I really do think that the lieutenants and captains, our chief, that are sitting here, they're just an amazing crew. I, I could not be more blessed to have such good staff and such good support. And then I do all the time when I publicly speak, I rarely, if it comes up and there's an opening, I rarely fail to mention the great relationship we've had over the years. And, and there's been a couple times, we've, there's been, you know, some struggle, but we've always managed to be, to, if we disagree, to disagree agreeably, and I tell people, and they'll compliment the work of the sheriff's office, and I never fail to say, I have a fully funded budget, I am not struggling here, we're, we're okay. The board of county commissioners, the taxpayers of Martin County have been very gracious to us in the sheriff's office, and allowed us to do the job we have to do. So thank you for what you're doing, God bless you, and.
One more, sorry.
I just thought of something, I, I can't speak highly enough for all of your departments, you know, everybody from, you know, your crime lab to road patrol, but I really wanted to highlight that your community policing division, you see them everywhere, they are such a tremendous asset in our communities, and, you know, you could be in any one of these different communities and see them present and on the ground, so again, I, you know, I, I pay the highest compliments to all of your staff, but we really do appreciate the community policing division as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Heatherington.
Okay, that reminded me of one more thing. I, you know, you, you think about what is included in this budget and what you have achieved, not only did we take care of your staff, hopefully, or you're taking care of your staff, hopefully, we've included the body cameras, which was a huge nut, but important, super important, but then there is the crime lab that Stacy just mentioned, which is world-class technology, and all of that, you know, when you think of what makes up this budget and all the things that, you know, the retirement system forces us to do and so on and so forth, that's fine. It is all those other things that you and your staff have put together that just continually make this place as best as it can be. It's remarkable what you have done in your 10 years, and your staff have done, so again, thank you. We'll see you in September, hopefully. I know, we're going to.
Thank you, Chairman.
We have, we have a tentative motion for approval of the sheriff's budget. Is there any further discussion? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Sheriff, thank you, staff.
Have a good day.
Go do good things. Okay, next item, the, the next couple items we have, we have the clerk, the circuit court and comptroller, we have the property appraiser, supervisor of elections, state judicial, and tax collector. It says here on my notes, and Lieutenant Don is going to do that for me, we won't be getting a presentation on their budgets, but we'll be giving an overview, Stephanie, correct?
Right. So this slide here just represents the, the FY '22 adopted budget to the FY '23 tentative budget for all the constitutional officers.
Stephanie, I'm sorry, can you please, I was reminded by a former chairman over here of the, the.
Board.
The board. Could you please tell us who you are?
Stephanie Merly, Budget Financial Manager for the Office of Management and Budget. This is really just a snapshot of all the constitutional officers' budgets, I see the clerks back here if they'd like to speak, I think, and then the state judiciary is also here. But unless there's any particular questions for them, this is just an FYI.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for any of our constitutionals? Commissioner Campi? Whoops, whoa, whoa, oh, well, that just lit up everybody. Did you have a question or you're making a motion?
No, a statement about this, just for more clarification for the public. I had a conversation with Ms. Timmin earlier last week, and she explained the things that are in her budget and why it is increasing. I'm assuming she's had that conversation with each of us, her information for the department, and I'm sure with all the constitutionals is available to be seen, we're not just breezing over this. I know I had a conversation with, with the tax collector and the supervisor of election, these are increases, they run their, their offices very conservative, fiscally conservative as well, so there are some increases, but they weren't, as the sheriff mentioned, they weren't just, you know, added on just for the sake of adding things on, they were either state requirements or very thoughtful increases that would enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of their departments. So I didn't want people to think that Ms. Merly just mentioned them and we're voting on them without really giving them, you know, any kind of thought, the thought's been through this process already.
And some are mandated, so.
Correct.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to touch on something that, that the clerk mentioned about her, the increase in her budget. She's doing a terrific thing, she's making sure that she has records, she's, a lot of our records are microfiche, and they're disintegrating, and she needs to make a copy of them before they disintegrate, because there are no longer readers available, even if the microfiche were in decent shape, there are no longer readers to read them, so thank goodness she's taking her, her job seriously and is creating a record for us forever. Thank you.
Commissioner Heatherington?
That's exactly what I was going to comment on, microfiche and, and all the public records would be available then online, you know, versus having to go in person, and, but one other thing I, I thought of is that, I thought I remembered when we did some of the ARPA allocation, that there were some, some funds that were available for transparency and public records, and if there are funds that were not applied for, you know, in certain categories or not used, which is my understanding, that some, some of those allocations maybe for a nonprofit or a certain category were not applied for, are those some funds that we can put for public records here for the clerk?
Yes, Commissioner, I also spoke to Don Donaldson, your county administrator, for the record. Thank you.
You're the boss now.
Any event, the, the issue is, is that we, while we did allocate our funds, not all of the funds may be expended 100 percent by what you allocated them for, if we have some freed-up ARPA funds, I think the clerk's project would be an excellent one to go to, and that would allow her to speed up the process, instead of doing it over two or three years, we might be able to speed it up. So I agree with you, Commissioner, that that would be something we would bring back to you if, if, when, when we have some freed-up ARPA funds.
Good. All right, thank you.
And I, I, for the sake of, maybe I'm trying to think if I want to do this, no, no, never mind. I think it's a, hopefully that happens, and that's a perfectly great place to use some of those funds. I would also tag on to what Commissioner Hurd said, that, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, we spent millions switching over all of our microfiche to digital, because we were having the same issues happen, and fully appreciate what the clerk's doing, and I would say this as well, and tag on to what Commissioner Campi said, we have probably, at least that I know, one of the best relationships with all of our constitutionals anywhere in the state, and probably one of the more conservative-based driven constitutional sub-officers in the state, and so for the taxpayers' purposes of all this. And so for the taxpayers' purposes of all this, you can rest assured that you have an amazing, amazing team of constitutionals that do their job. They're incredibly fiscally responsible and, and very much on top of their jobs, and they produce amazing results. So Commissioner Campi?
I'd make a motion to tentatively accept the budgets for each and all of the constitutional officers as presented. I'm sorry, old lane.
We have a motion and we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, first up.
So I'm going to give a high-level overview of each particular department, explaining the budget changes, and then give the departments an opportunity to discuss a little bit about what they have planned for the FY23 budget cycle, as well as any accomplishments or goals. So the first department up is the administration department. In the FY23 budget, we're seeing an increase in the projected tourism revenues, the addition of a half of an FTE for tourism, which is going to be shared for the, with the ecosystem department for ecotourism initiatives. And there is an increase in the inmate medical insurance for the Martin County jail in the medical services division. Mr. Stokis.
For the record, George Stokis, Assistant County Administrator. I think Stephanie did a great job of more than happy answering any questions in regards to our budget. Oh, and we're continuing with our goals. I'll provide oversight for the board's strategic plan process, report back to you on a quarterly basis. Assist departments, say aye. That's my, that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair. Pretty flat.
Hey, then. Anybody have any questions for George or Stephanie on administration? Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, this is throughout the budget. It's in, in every department. There is absolutely no consistency among the retirement contributions and life and health insurance. In some cases, they fluctuate up, in some cases, they fluctuate down. There's absolutely no predictability to it whatsoever, regardless of what kind, what the increases are for each individual department. What's up with, with those?
I can talk about that. So it all depends on the person that's in the position at the time, depending on what their retirement allocation is. So depending on if somebody entered the drop program or if they are in senior management class for retirement rates, that's all dictated by the, the state and as well as the labor distributions upon the divisions. Now, life and health insurance, that also depends on the elections of the people that are in the position. Some people may have dropped from family to single or even got rid of their health insurance totally. So depending on what their current election was at the time of the budget development, that's what's put into the budget.
Okay. Thanks.
No problem.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I was curious, and this may be more of a policy, but do we consider agritourism under ecotourism? Because I never see, you know, much about agritourism unless it's lumped in with ecotourism. And so this FTE half, you know, part-time, will they be working on agritourism as well?
That would be a great question for Ms. Nerissa Okie. But I do believe I've seen agritourism in her tourism information, so I believe that is part of it. I think this is a very new program for her. They tried last year to get this FTE, but she can talk about that more. I'm not sure if she's...
Maybe a, just a presentation and a future date on eco and agritourism would be great.
The ecosystem is, is focused a lot on our own facilities and working with our vendors in the waterway. The agritourism, of course, is working with our private-held farms, and Nerissa's been focusing on that. So this, initially, this staff person, and Nerissa will come back with a presentation, would be focusing on all of our environmental lands and access to our, our waterways and our natural lands through ecotourism and working with those private vendors that supply those services.
Nerissa's running.
That's right.
Sprinting as we speak.
She's sprinting?
Sprinting.
It looked like a speed walk.
And I think it'd be an interesting topic to come back and hear.
I'm, I'm guessing that she is going to not waste the opportunity. Why don't you come right up to the podium?
Good morning, commissioners. Nerissa Okie for the Office of Tourism and Marketing. And we have an agritourism initiative, which is grown in Martin, that falls under the regular tourism initiative. This position is a position that we've been discussing with ecosystems. Woo, God, gotta start exercising again. I kind of ran down here. We've been discussing for a while. So we have over 100,000 acres of parks and conservation land. We don't have any programming that's done on those. Excuse me.
Okay, rest.
Woo, this is a, gotta get in the gym. Okay. We don't have any programming that takes place there. So we thought it was really important. We also think it's important that this has a residential component and that it's a factual component, and that's why we want to split it with the ecosystems position. So John Mail can use this as well for any exotic or evasive removal or any project that he needs, as well as tourism for our visitors, we can show people there. Also, we want to make sure that we're directing the flow of traffic with the ecosystems department. So if there's something that's taking place at Kiplinger or like Maggie's Hammock is being renovated right now and kind of being reconstructed, we don't want to send people there if there's being work done on it, but we'll send them to Della Plane or we'll send them somewhere else. So this is really an ecotourism, and when we look at agritourism, we keep that separate.
Breathe.
Decided out of being, out of shape here. It's good.
So while you're there, interesting to that question, we had a couple show up at our TDC meeting last Monday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you. And they, they had a blueberry farm and other things out in Indian Town. And because of some stuff that went on with some federal law and import rules, the blueberry industry in Florida has taken an enormous beating, if you will. And so they have essentially converted their facility over to an agritourism facility. And it's really brilliant what they're doing. And then the numbers that they're bringing to their farm to participate, both in pick and, and weddings and events and so on, is staggering. And so I think there's more to come from this, how it all comes together and whether they stay two separate items, we haven't really discussed at, at the TDC. But you certainly raised an interesting point that is there, is there, is there a link between the two and how do they, how do they or don't they, they work? But there's probably much more to come from, from that front. I also talked to them after the meeting, and there's some state legislation that still needs to be worked on relative to agritourism to highlight, I think, some of the things that they're doing that will absolutely benefit the industry a little bit more than where the state has already gone with the agritourism discussion.
There was some state legislation that came through that was supposed to make it, the general understanding was easier to operate an agritourism business. And there has been a bit of a disconnect with what that legislation actually does. It's a little too broad. So I think this year, we'll probably see them going back and narrowing that down or redefining it to make sure that the agritourism businesses are protected. Because we've seen a lot of our businesses here, our agritour, our agricultural businesses that have had to convert and add an agritourism component to stay sustainable and keep it within the families. So there's a lot more to come on that, and we're looking at probably reinvigorating the effort. We had a symposium here, it was one of the first in the state on agritourism several years ago. So we're looking at what do we do in terms of bringing that back because the regulations have changed. We had IFIS as a partner, we had the Agritourism Association as a partner, and that's where we got the whole dedicated website, which is the grown in Martin website. So again, it's probably something that'll come back to the TDC for discussion, but the position here is more eco-based than agrabased.
I look forward to that agritourism discussion as well.
You all good? Nerissa, thank you very much. Thanks for the sprint.
Oh, thank you.
Where were we? Do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion if there's not one.
Making a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, good, great. Super. Anybody from the public wish to discuss this item? Seeing none, back to the board. We have a motion for tentative approval for the administration and community development department. All in favor of the motion? Oops, did you want to do community development?
We could do that as well, or you could do separate motions, whichever works for you.
Why don't I hold that motion and you do this and then we'll combine them?
Okay. So next up, we have the Office of Community Development. They are actually showing a budget reduction for this year, and that's due to the reduction of last year, they had a $50,000 historical survey expense for the historical preservation program that has been removed. And we have Ms. Susan Coras to discuss the happenings of OCD.
Well, that just doesn't sound right.
Good morning, commissioners. Susan Coras, OCD. So we are showing a decrease in our budget. That was lucky, wasn't it? I like that. But we are continuing to focus on increasing our infrastructure in each CRA. We're going to be done with Rio Sewer this year. Port Salerno Water, we are just completing, so that's a, a great thing with a, and I just have to say with a huge assist from utilities, because then there's Golden Gate and Palm City and, and Salerno Sewer and the other areas, that's just thanks to them for that. That's going to be a big help in redeveloping those, continuing to redevelop those areas. And then we have some exciting projects coming up. The El Camino Trail is going to be going out to bid. We have Park Drive in Salerno that we're going to be looking at, and we have the Palm City Patio that will be going out to bid as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Coras? Seeing none, thank you, Susan. We have a motion, we have a second for both administration and the Office of Community Development. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks very much. Are you leaving us, George?
I am.
Okay.
I'm going back to my box.
Okay. Ms. Merly, growth management?
Next up, we have growth management for FY23 budget considerations. You're going to see this often along all of the departments, increases to fuel and other services and supplies based on the external factors such as the economy currently, as well as initial planning and a draft RFP for upcoming year-based comprehensive growth management plan amendments. We have Mr. Schilling here to discuss the happenings of growth management.
Mr. Schilling, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Paul Schilling, Growth Management Director. As you all know, we have a very busy time in the county with development applications, building permit reviews, and just general inquiries from customers. We do have a big work program coming up with the year-based plan amendments, with also comprehensive planning changes and land development regulations with respect to the affordable housing initiative. So we anticipate that on the horizon. I'd like to again thank my staff. I have a wonderful staff who works tirelessly to help the customers in the county, whether they be a homeowner looking for basic information on a rear yard pool or all the way up the scale to our local planning associates and planning firms. So thank you.
Commissioners?
Yes.
You've done a great job.
Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I'm looking back over 10 years and going from personnel in your department from 2012, which was 15, to 28, so nearly doubled your number of full-time employees, the biggest increase in Martin County over that 10-year period. Why?
Two of those were building permit reviewers, zoning compliance reviewers. As I recall, there were also project coordinators, so senior planners, principal planners. We currently are down to principal planners. We're having difficulty filling those positions. We have, we are down a site compliance inspector as well. So we have three positions which remain unfilled. I think from a perspective of the building permit reviews, we review almost 6,000 permits a year, somewhere thereabouts. We're about 5,400 through last week. We have 120 active applications at any given time, and that fluctuates maybe from 90 to 100 to 120. We have variance applications, we have alternative compliance applications, we have a robust environmental division, as you know, and we've, we've focused a lot of attention on refining our processes. So we are getting very good at turnaround times. You may recall, as long as, or as recently as about three to four years ago, building permits were basically reviewed by one or two folks. We, we now have three or four folks reviewing those permits, so we're able to turn around those reviews within 24 hours in most cases, whereas prior years, even back into the mid 2000s, that could have been anywhere from two to three weeks, even a month. We have the Acela system, so it's imperative that we keep things within a workflow so that other reviewers have the opportunity to review those, and then those comments can be given to the contractor or planning firm, whatever the case is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Campi?
Thank you, excellent response. I would make a motion to accept the growth management tentative 2023 budget.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody from the, oops, Mr. Donaldson?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add into, if you go back to 2012, we were at the, kind of the worst portion of our staffing in relationship to the Great Recession, and the departments that were hit the most would have been growth management and our development review and, and public works and also in the building department. And so when you look back in those times, there was a reduction. And also, as Paul had mentioned, we did have some shifting of code enforcement around between the departments that would have influenced those early years of staffing. Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to comment on growth management? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. I would say this, Paul, if, if I get questions about what we do and how we do things here, most often it's about our building department and our growth management department and the time it takes to produce permits. And I would say 99% of the time, when it, when it gets answered, it falls back either on the applicant or on something external to the county that it's not us. And, and I think one of the brilliant things about our system is that we can document, we can verify, and we can assure people that from the time a permit is issued or a development order is issued, we can track that, we can prove to people that we do it as quickly as anybody else can do it, and we do it really, really well. So remarkable job you're all doing. And if Larry were here, I'd say the same thing on the other side of that equation. It's a lot. When you give us those numbers, that's a lot. I mean, it, you know, it's not that, maybe it's not possible to do, but it just, it's a lot of work that goes through that place, and we appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Paul. Stephanie, the next item, airport?
Airport, pretty much just stayed flat. 0.46% increase. And we have Sam Carver here to discuss what's happening in the airport.
Generally speaking, isn't it good to have a flat airport?
Good morning, Sam Carver, Airport Manager. Yes, we have a flat airport. We also have a thriving airport. Basically, all of general aviation is doing well across the entire country right now. But at our airport, revenue is up, operations are up, safety is up, and complaints are down. So we're doing pretty well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Life is good.
If anyone has questions, I will move the tentative approval of the airport budget.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the airport agenda item? We have a motion and a second for tentative approval. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sam, thank you. Mr. Massing, we were just talking about you.
We have the building department, again, just maintaining the budget for current levels of service. And Mr. Massing?
Anything you wish to add?
Pardon me?
Anything you wish to add?
I just want to thank my staff. We've extraordinarily busy these last few years. It seems never-ending, and without the hard work of that staff, you know, we couldn't be as successful as we've been, so...
I agree. Commissioner Campi?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment, you know, I see that our department heads are thanking their staff, which is the right thing to do, but I would also like to thank Mr. Massing. Whenever I have a constituent that contacts me, normally by the time that call reaches me, that person's in panic mode, most of the time, based on something that they didn't do properly or fast enough, or sometimes there are occasions where there's miscommunication and they might have contractors... and they might have contractors in their yard, in their homes. It's normally in a panic mode, and every single time I have ever reached out to Mr. Massing, he has, without a doubt, handled it professionally. I call him old school. He just gets it done, allowing me to then call back the constituent and say that it's been worked out. Last week, I had to reach out to him about something, and I just had a suspicion that maybe I was interrupting a vacation. And I was, and I had no idea that I was doing that, but he handled it. You know, I appreciate your wife and family understanding that even when you are on vacation, you are never officially gone from the office, and I just wanted to personally and publicly thank you, because I've probably done it many times, and every single time consistently, you've handled this situation. So, thank you very much for your dedication.
I echo that.
So, I can imagine if it's me, times all of us, then so much for your vacation.
Yes.
Commissioner Hurd?
I'm looking at your building administration sheet, and half of your entire budget is indirect costs. What are indirect costs? I'm on page 153.
Indirect costs, we're semi an enterprise fund, so indirect costs are costs that the county charges back to our department. So, they're things like paying for HR, the legal department, other departments.
Okay. And also, now I'm on performance measures on code enforcement, on page 160, and actuals for 2021 were 1,055, projected for 2022 are 5,800, and projected for 2023 are 1,000. Are those figures accurate?
I'm at a disadvantage. It can't possibly be accurate if they...
Yeah.
If they... That large of a disparity.
Okay.
I will have to get you some answers.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else? Larry, again, what I said with Growth Management, it is always... And everybody else just chimed in and said the same. You run a terrific department. You do get us our answers instantaneously. I'm looking forward to your agenda item that we'll share with the public. I think we're criticized some for it takes too long to do things, and typically, when we are questioned on why it took so long to do something, it's typically not on our end, it's on somebody else's end. And it's always great that... Unfortunately, you're free on vacation, because I've done that to him once or twice as well. You always have an answer for us that we can give back to our constituents and let them understand what's really happening. So, we very much appreciate you and your staff and everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Motion to accept the budgets... Tentative budget for the Building Department of 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Larry, thank you very much. Have a good day.
You as well.
Ms. Woods, County Attorney's Office.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Sarah Woods, County Attorney. My operational budget has remained the same with no increases. The large increase that you see, in my opinion, it's a large increase, is due to salary and fringe benefits increases. I triple-checked with budget to confirm that there's not anything I can do about it. It's just what's required for contributions. I do want to say, like all of us, I am so proud of my staff, and they are continually impressing me, going above and beyond, working smart and lean, and, you know, our mighty staff of seven accomplishes a lot through the years, and I want to shout out to them because you've got a really dedicated county attorney's office. And again, our main goal is to give you high-quality legal service and to continue to go above and beyond and meet your expectations, and, most important, to minimize litigation and increase productivity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Woods? I do. I think over the past few weeks, we've had some issues we've been dealing with that exactly describe exactly what Ms. Woods just pointed out for us. We have some challenging, very challenging issues we're dealing with, and our staff in the legal department with the leadership of our county attorney are doing amazing stuff and are positioning the county in the way that we need to be positioned. So, again, thank you for all your efforts over there. Anybody else? We need a motion?
Moved to proof.
Second. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Woods, thank you. Next up, Fire Rescue.
Fire Rescue, FY23 tentative budget represents a 1.77% change over FY22. In this budget, we have the addition of one administrative coordinator, full-time equivalent, to enhance the customer service at the public safety complex, and the general increases to fuel and medical supplies based on the external economic conditions as well.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Chad Chanchuli, Fire Chief for Martin County Fire Rescue, and to my right flank, Matt Resch, our Fire Rescue Administrator. So, we're excited to present the budget to you today, especially over these past few years, just the trying times of public safety in general, of what we've gone through and what we accomplished. And we did... We have a minor increase with that budget, as you can see, and as all we already demonstrated, one is a full-time employee that we need at the public safety complex, and that's really our first point of contact from the public. It's at our front desk, so it's when somebody walks in for any kind of information regards to fire rescue, that would be that contact. We don't have somebody that's full-time for that, as well as taking in a lot of phone calls from the general public in regards to fire rescue. But the lion's share of this really, really comes from our increased cost in medical expenses and our increased cost in fuel expenses. And over this past year, those two alone have been astronomical, but we're still able to maintain practically where our budget is now in absorbing those costs. Obviously, it's a supply and demand, and we're the consumer for this. As far as our future goals, our goal's always going to be the same: provide high-quality level of service to the community, and we consistently find more efficient ways to provide that quality, and that's something that we strive for. And the last, but not least, is our mission to continually educate our public on just public safety itself, and we really promote public safety with our public because we feel if we can educate them effectively, that they can mitigate minor emergencies prior to escalating to our level, and we truly believe in that mission. But the biggest thing I think I want to showcase in this slide right here is the picture of the fire station that you see. As you all know, that's Station 33. For the general viewing public, this station is a replacement station of our old station in Hove Sound. The old station was never designed for firefighters. It was not designed for fire rescue. This station is designed for today's, modern-day firefighters. I wanted to thank the leadership, the Board of County Commissioners. I want to thank the county administration leadership for investing in fire rescue and investing in the safety of the public. But for the public, I just want them to understand, this station, this station, it has so many efficiencies built in, it allows us to respond to your emergencies in a much quicker manner. That time saved, our seconds handed back over to our patients, that makes a difference, and that does save lives. So, again, I just wanted to thank you for that, and I also want to thank, like everyone else has been doing, our boots on the ground, our field personnel, our administrative team. If it wasn't for them, it wouldn't matter what I say or do right now. They do an amazing job, no matter their circumstances, and they always try to maintain, and they accomplish it, a high level of service. So, I'm very proud of our organization. Do you have any questions?
All right. The lights just lit up. Wow. I believe Commissioner Heatherington was first.
I just...
You want to go in alphabetical?
I want to. But I'll be the briefest. Compliment your operation... You mentioned your operational efficiencies, that I see your leadership team has taken a lot of effort into that operational efficiency, and I just want to compliment you and your leadership team on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hurd, I think you were next.
Yep. I'm looking at aero medical operations, and there is a reduction of $1.8 million because we're no longer responsible for the cost of the helicopter. Can you explain what this item is about?
So, I'll elaborate a little bit on that first. So, the administrative team that we built out, they are very, very aggressive with trying to find just a better way to deliver the model of fire rescue. And aero medical itself, that financial model, when we first stepped into it and looked at it, we looked at it, and we felt there is a way, better way to deliver the same level of care, but to do it on a different financial model that is a cost benefit to the community. And we actually took these vendors, when we went out to bid, we took them to task. And because we took them to task because of the solid team that we built, Matt Resch being one of them, we were able to come up with this model that had a huge savings. And over that seven-year term of that contract, it's a five-year contract with two one-year extensions, we can save upwards of $9 million. It can just be done better, except the level of care, it didn't decrease. In fact, it got better, and I thank our administrative team, and Matt Resch is one of them as well.
Terrific job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Matt.
You want to expand on that?
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Campi?
Thank you. As with the sheriff this morning, and I've said this many times in the past, I think my colleagues would agree, the first services that our residents expect of us is public safety, whether it's the sheriff's office or fire rescue. And I think I can speak for myself that every night you go to sleep or you're traveling around in our community, not worried about either of those things. And sadly, as we see things that are happening throughout the state and, of course, in the country, we can take that for granted based on the organizations that are in place, but a lot of communities can't. And God forbid, a tragedy that is, you know, seems to be much more frequent than any of us wish it would be. In any community, whenever you hear about Highland Park, I have friends that live in Highland Park, I have friends that were marching in that parade. You can only hope that public safety and fire rescue is there and that they're ready, and I think what we have here is the first dollar that's spent in tax dollars should be this. I appreciate... I knew the helicopter thing was going to work out. You've been here a couple of times to discuss that, and your not-so-secret weapon these days is that guy right there, Matt Resch.
That's true.
I know that although he's not... He doesn't wear the uniform, he is a superstar, and you've done... Chad, you and I are friends, you have done a remarkable job leading the organization in the right direction. So, thanks to both of you, I'd make a motion to accept Fire Rescue's fiscal year '23 tentative budget.
I was going to beat him to the punch with the light. Go ahead.
No, 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 no. Do you want to second it?
Sure. I was going to say, nice suit, by the way.
Thank you.
And you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
You know, and it's easy for us to say because we see you one-on-one and all this other stuff, but I want to tell you, what I've heard from the public, you're recognized in the public. You know, people that you wouldn't think would be engaged enough with what's going on to understand that, and they've... The public have seen a shift in the positive direction under your leadership, so I just wanted to tell you that. I just had that conversation yesterday with somebody that reminded me, and it's not the only one, so.
I do appreciate that, but I have to give it all to the team that we have.
Absolutely. You and your team.
So, a couple of things. I'm glad you brought up the aero medical, because that has been a struggle for us for a really long time. When we originally made the decision and your staff came to us originally and said, hey, we got a better way of doing this than what was being proposed at the time, we all knew what we were getting into, cost-wise, and we've been battling it and fighting it ever since. And so, to see it going in this direction, and with you all's leadership and everybody else that's got their footprint on it, fantastic. It's a huge shift, and it's just been a... It's been a struggle all these years, but it's the right direction, so kudos to you all on that. A call-out to our firefighter challenge team and everything involved in that program. Hopefully, we're going to get the internationals, I guess, back.
Worlds.
Worlds, sorry, not worlds.
Which is the Super Bowl for the Combat Challenge.
There you go. And so, kudos to everybody that worked on that. It's great for our staff, it's great recognition for Martin County to bring people in from all over the world to come see our place and to showcase and highlight our staff and what remarkable things you all do and recruit, quite honestly. It's a great tool for all of us. All the rest have said it, it's remarkable what you all do. Our public... You know, our public should never have to understand how all this works, it's just when they expect something to happen, it happens, and people go about their lives, and that's because you guys run a first-class operation. So, thank you, and thanks to all of our staff. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great day. You, too. General Services.
So, for the General Services budget, we're seeing a change of 6.74%. Again, really tame increases due to the cost of diesel fuel, FPL rate increases for electricity, as well as the new cleaning contracts that are recognizing a $2.35 an hour minimum wage increase since the last bid. And we have Mr. Stokis and Mr. Kevin Landry here to talk about the General Services FY23 goals and accomplishments.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair... Or, excuse me, good morning, Mr. Chair. Pretty much for... As we've just had a departure with Mr. Doherty, we have Mr. Landry here acting as interim director, and General Services has been assigned to the Assistant County Administrator's purvey. We're focusing really on four things. One is to continue with the energy savings with conversion to LED lighting. Secondly, working with our resiliency programs through hardening and to prep for extreme weather, and then continuing with conversion of trade staff to tracking via mobile devices. And then finally, the last thing is we're starting to look at the combination of solar energy and electric vehicles and our facilities. That'll be our... You'll probably see that starting to be reflected through our capital program, and we'll be coming back to this body here with a presentation at some point in regards to that, since that was one of your priorities. Mr. Landry, you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, sir.
I guess we'll continue, you know, if we have a great staff, great trade staff. I've personally visited, I think, every facility since in July. Lots of improvements, a lot more work can be done, but again, we could not do that without the fine staff that we have at General Services. And I'll be more... Mr. Landry and I will be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Hurd?
I see that the sheriff, building repair and maintenance, accounts for over half of the entire countywide building and maintenance. Tell me, what proportion of our buildings are the sheriff's?
The Holt Law Enforcement Center is one of the older buildings in the county, and especially in regards to the operational aspects of the jail. We're in the process of renovating pod by pod, each pod of the jail, because the flooring, walls, plumbing, it's all aging out.
Can... I'd like to add on to that, Commissioner, if you don't mind. Our jail is used 24/7, 365, and I just... It was one of the last tours I did. It is one of our older facilities. Our staff is going through pod by pod, and when you're repairing that facility, you know, having a chipped tile, small-chipped tile, it doesn't occur to you that, you know, when you're going through those things and you repair them, you have to repair them to the point where someone doesn't try to inflict harm on another or inflict harm on themselves, and we've had that at the jail. And I... This is going to sound a little rude, but a lot of the people in that facility are not happy to be there, and they're not being respectful of that facility. I've personally witnessed it, and you're dealing with everything from blood to feces to urine to... They're kicking the walls, the windows. I mean, it's... That building is beat up every day, every hour. It's an interesting visit, and I think our staff's doing a pretty good job, but... And I will also say this, one thing that I figured... Learned in my visits is, when we go in to replace it, we have to do it right the first time, and you sometimes only get one swing of that bat to get it right, and that does have a cost to it, and we're... I will say our staff is doing a good job of finding ways to cut that, but also maintain the same level of safety. And I apologize if I sound like I'm on a soapbox, but that facility, I am proud of that jail. I don't know that... My wife thinks that's the oddest thing for me to say. I have been to many jails on tours, not arrests, but our jail is, in my opinion, it's very well taken care of, can still use better work, but it's clean, and our staff's doing a good job on that. Thanks.
Anybody else? I would say this much to add to my comment, that your department does an amazing job, like all... like all of ours does, and probably doesn't get as much credit as it should because there's just things that happen daily that people don't know why they happen, but they happen. And that's super important. And I think the whole jail conversation is part of that. I mean, most people in Martin County, hopefully, will never get to see the inside of our jail. And I can't even imagine, I know through all the years I've been doing this, what it takes and what I've heard for conversations to maintain that place. Can't even imagine. I'd also say this, I'd like just to publicly thank Jeff Dougherty for his years here, his time here. Jeff played certainly an important role. And certainly with all of us, I'm sure, when constituents want something fixed, we reach out to our department heads that are in those departments and they make those things happen. And so, Jeff, best wishes for your future and your next endeavors. And thanks for the years that you gave to Martin County.
You can always come home.
We need a motion if there's not any conversation.
I move approval of the tentative General Services budget.
Second. If a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. To our departments that just showed up, I apologize. We're going to take our 10:30 break. We'll be back around 20 till quarter of, and we will pick up with information technology and technology investment plan.
See, just in time for a break.
All right, welcome back from our break. We will resume with our information technology and technology investment plan. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm going to talk about both budgets because I have a general statement that I want to make about the combined two different budgets. My name is Mike Merker. Yes, you want to know who I am.
I'd like to know who you are. He's never met you before.
I want everyone else to know who you are.
Thank you for reminding me.
We're in a past life.
No, we don't want to know that. Not important.
For the record, my name is Mike Merker and I'm your chief information officer over the IT department. The information technology services budget is our operating budget. That's pencils and papers and paper and people, those types of things. And we are staffed to maintain current levels of service. We adjust as the requirements for information technology changes and we've been seeing an increase in service requests, so we have a budget that reflects that. And then for the technology investment plan, the primary considerations here are for data security and business continuity, and we have mostly standard contractual increases in our licensing costs and our maintenance costs. What I'd like to say is that, and I have a prepared statement so I get this right, but before I do that, I want to acknowledge Brian Kincaid, who's with me. This will be Brian's last budget. He's retiring this year.
What? Motion to deny.
After 25-plus years of service to Martin County.
Wow.
So Brian, thank you for your years of service and for all the support.
Thank you for your service.
So on both of my slides, I had cybersecurity and security-related things. It's a goal that we have to take seriously this coming year. I spent the last five years watching Florida House Bill 7055 cybersecurity, and Governor DeSantis signed that final version of the bill into law at the end of June of this year. The bill imposes requirements on local governments in regard to cybersecurity, event responses, as well as installing and maintaining a security platform. We're required to have state-stipulated systems, procedures, and training for all county staff in place by January 1st of 2024, and that's less than 18 months from now. And the bill provided for $30 million to be shared across all 67 counties in the state of Florida.
That's one county, right?
I think Miami-Dade is going to probably inhale that in one fell swoop.
We're just talking about that, actually.
Yeah, so meeting the requirements and the deadline, as well as planning for ongoing maintenance of those systems and procedures beyond January 1st of 2024 will be a focus of my entire department. It's not just the law. It's really the right thing to do to ensure that all government entities that depend on the county information technology services department for services have a secure and available infrastructure to support their efforts to deliver their services to Martin County taxpayers. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I'm looking at the information technology services portion on page 291, project management services. The same number of employees and regular salaries are more than doubling.
So I believe that Commissioner, what your, the staffing numbers are misstated in the budget book. We actually moved staff around from place to place, and we added a couple of staffs. So there, the staffing number for the coming fiscal year is correct. The staffing number for last fiscal year is incorrect.
Okay.
It's the same.
What was it last year?
I have to go back and look. I believe it was either four or five.
Okay.
There's a, no net change in the FTEs, it's just the difference in the divisions. So I believe, Brian, you know exactly what people were moved from what division to the other, but I think it was between the technical management services and the project management services division. So you should see a large decrease in one of the divisions as well.
Okay.
The increase was all salary and benefit, but really people just moved around due to a reorganization we did in our department.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I think we've seen this year certainly the attention and the need for cybersecurity and all of our security, but I thought because Mr. Circus had spent, and any resident, when they're engaged and interested in our budget, I think is a good thing, and since he had taken so much time to go through, his question was on travel numbers across the board in your department from '21 to '23. It seems like travel had substantially increased, and I just thought since he had taken so much time that if you could kind of cover that.
Certainly, Commissioner. So as you, as everyone's aware, travel budgets were cut because we weren't traveling for any sort of training. I've said in the past, and I will continue to say, that remote training has a place in IT, but it is woefully lacking in quality typically and not, doesn't give us opportunities to interact with our peers and learn from them. So what you're seeing an increase in travel for our department reflects the fact that we are actually traveling to conferences now rather than attending them remotely.
Thank you.
I just want to share just a little bit about what you're doing with the National Association of Counties with their whole cyber component. Are we a member of that? I thought we were participating in that. No?
Apparently not.
Apparently not.
Well, I mean, as far as, as far as providing input to the state, there's, so there's a, there's a, there's a state effort to gather statistics, but there's not a cyber effort, Commissioner. It's a wireless and a Wi-Fi effort.
There's, we can talk afterward.
Okay.
No, so at the national level, National Association of Counties, there is, and it's been an enormous effort, as you would imagine with what's all going on at the national level. I thought we had assigned somebody to that team to participate in that, but we can chat later, it's fine.
Fair enough.
No worries. Okay, any further discussion on information technology? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board.
Both to approve.
Oh, one second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, there are library, libraries. Good morning.
The library's FY '23 tentative budget. Sorry.
That's a library joke, get it? Come on out.
Reflects a 6.79% increase. These are just due to contractual services staff wages to prepare for the increase in minimum wage requirements mandated by the state and a standard increase to collection vendor cost for print books and other library materials. We have Ms. Salas here.
Jen Salas, library director. I did want to take a moment to share one of our newest accomplishments in our literacy initiative. So if you can see on the slide, the picture is referring to our barbershop books program. We just started that just a couple of weeks ago, and it was through American Rescue Plan funds. So currently, we have seven different barber shops throughout Martin County focused mostly in Golden Gate, East Stewart, and Indian Town, who now have reading spaces and training for their staff for literacy functions. So a lot of times in different communities, the barbershop is a place where family goes together and gets to experience, you know, a couple hours of community, so we're happy to bring literacy. And while I love sharing these wonderful initiatives that we do, I do need to refer a little bit to what Mr. Stokus mentioned about the jail staff dealing with blood, feces, and urine, because that is also a reality that our library staff deal with, and it is part of changing library services. And we seem to shift a little bit more from training our staff and readers advisory to training more on mental health issues. We are one of the welcoming spaces in our community for people dealing with mental health, memory loss, as well as homelessness. So thank you to our library staff, especially our frontline staff, who probably do not get paid enough to do what they do each day.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from the board?
Move tentative approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to discuss this item? Seeing none, it is remarkable, again, as all of our departments, what you all pull off. I'm always amazed at the actual number of visits and connections that you make, and bringing the mental health side into this thing probably complicates that significantly. So good work to y'all. Great job.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Jen, thank you very much. Have a great day. Next up, Mr. Abate, Parks.
The FY '23 Parks and Recreation budget is reflecting a change of 14%, but it's important to note that the increase in this budget is largely offset by fee-based revenues that are anticipated at Seaside and Sand Dune Cafes, Phipps Park, and Sailfish Sands Golf Course. And additionally, the only extraneous request we have in this budget is a $400,000 request to outsource 490 trash containers at 62 county-wide parks. We have Mr. Abate here that I'm sure will speak to it.
Good morning. Kevin Abate, Parks and Recreation Director. And before I get started, I did bring some of my amazing Parks and Recreation team behind me.
See that.
When does the fashion show start?
You know, they, we, I think it's important for the board to see the staff and the amazing job that they've done over the, my 11 years, but especially in the past year.
That's another one of those, I can't believe that's been 11 years already.
Yes, my 11th budget, believe it or not. So it's been, it's been amazing so far and continue to do amazing things in the Parks Department. So as Stephanie alluded to, the 14.8% increase is largely based on the success stories of all the things we've been doing in parks, at our cafes, our water park, our golf course, and everything that we do. But we did feel that we wanted to focus on some things that we don't do really well. And one, one of the things that we don't do really well are clean restrooms, which we outsource and collect garbage. And to kind of keep our level of service up very high, our number-one goal with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan is to maintain and improve existing facilities. We believe by outsourcing waste services, combined with the, we had 167% increase in requests for service from last year to this year on maintenance requests only. So we find ourselves in where the Parks Department and the Park, and Park Operations Team is really heavy on fixing things. These are requests coming in from the public, which we're focused on. So we want to spend less time doing something that we don't do an amazing job at, which is trash receptacle and cleaning around them and the things that come along with that, reduce our injuries to our employees, not having to deal with the things that people throw in garbage cans, et cetera. And we believe that if we outsource this, it'll be a better level of service for us. What we intend to do, if approved by the board, is to rebid our restroom services, cleaning, and garbage can under one contract. That would be our goal for more of an economy of scale. So that is our single request. Other than that, the budget is remotely flat, with the exception that we do have some reductions and subsidies, for example, at the golf course. And the water park, we have a subsidy, but we didn't use it last year because it made money.
Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Just making sure, I knew the answer, but sometimes I get kicked under here. So other than that, that is the presentation. That's right, I deserve kicks.
Any questions for Mr. Abate? I would say this, whoever cleans the bathrooms currently out at Seaside does a great job because every time I go in there, they're clean. So who's ever doing that, on our staff, if it's staff that's doing it, at least that restroom is very well taken care of. And Kevin, you know, again, all of our departments, what you all pull off, what you do, with the breadth of, of the size and the capacity of our Parks Department, is nothing short of amazing. You know, I try to get out to Seaside almost every weekend and have breakfast out there, and you get to hear what people are saying, sitting there having breakfast, and you've put together a really good staff out there, which is great. But I hear nothing but compliments, and people love coming there and enjoy the experience as they do with everything else that we do in the Parks Department. So kudos to you, kudos to your staff and the team out and back there. Commissioner Campy?
Thank you. Can you speak to us a bit about your progress with boat ramps?
We expect the Sandsprit Park boat ramps to go out to bid next week. We're working with Capital Products, is working with Purchasing. So that's been fully designed and permitted, and then the expectation is to award the bid in October upon the new budget year. We have a fine grant, and we have a match for it. Bids will come back in before the budget process. We'll see where we land. And then subsequently, we're working on the second boat ramp, which is Stewart-Cosway, which will be, which will be permitted by the fall. And then we have a grant for the other three remaining boat ramps, a matching grant as well, to do the, start the design of them. So the good news is that we're ahead of the designs, ahead of the money, and hopefully we'll catch up, and then each year we'll get a little bit more efficient. So we should start our work at Sandsprit or award a bid sometime in the fall.
Great. I'd also like to take a moment, you know, we don't see each of the departments all the time, but the work that's being done at Charlie Leighton Park with the reconstruction and the redesign of the community center there and the restrooms, I've already heard from people, positive feedback. We look forward to them being done, and I know your team, a lot of the familiar faces I see behind you. You know, people think Parks and Rec and it's more programs, but you know, you encompass all of it, the construction side, design side, maintenance side. I know it's a big operation, and most of the public, you know, earlier this morning I said about public safety, but you know, God willing, most people don't call 911. But 99% of our residents are interfacing with the government in your department, in Parks and Rec, and you know, like my colleagues, I travel around either to go to events that are in parks, or go and look at projects, or meet your staff in the parks, and I think you're doing a remarkable job, and so is that group behind you. Thank you.
Hurd?
And also, another project that I'm really looking forward to, as are a lot of people, is Phipps Park. So you want to talk about, a bit about progress and challenges and what's going on with Phipps Park, and when we can expect to see it fully operational?
We have anticipated substantial completion in August. However, we have some supply chain issues for the pedestals, which is where we plug in for power. We've heard January on that. Other than that, we'll be ready, and when we're done, it'll be 104-acre destination campground with full 50-amp service, Wi-Fi. We're off septic completely and now into sewer, which is remarkable. We believe the demand for that, for RVs in general across the US, is going to be right-size for what we're doing. We'll be excited to open, and it looks like it's going to be a 2023 opening, full opening.
So one of the big issues right now is the electrical pedestals. They're the same ones that are used in marinas, and there aren't any. So we got a partial delivery, and maybe we can partially open?
Yeah, we think that we can use what we had existing, which are 24 of the pedestals, so we can get a quarter of it open and generate some revenue to offset our expenses. We'll do that minimally, but there's still a little ways to go. We're planting trees now, which is exciting. So it's, the project is exceptional, and I think when we're done, the ribbon cutting, we'll, I think most of the residents will be fairly surprised about what we've done out there.
Yeah, it's going to be terrific. And another thing is there's a boat ramp there, too, so that hopefully will take some of the heat off of Sandsprit, which nobody's looking forward to. And we'll try to keep, well, Sandsprit is a question mark, whether or not we try to keep.
The plan for Sandsprit is, in the bid, is that we keep one of the boat ramps open. That is how we will bid it. Where it winds up, we'll see with the challenges of construction, and we'll see where that goes. So that's the way it's bid, is to have one of the ramps open while one is under construction. So we'll rip off the Band-Aid and do the biggest one first.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll revisit that.
Yeah.
Who knows what construction and operations will do concurrently?
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I just, Sandsprit, you know, that's certainly, we're going to need to try to keep some access for boaters, but we've already talked about that.
That's the priority.
Motion to accept Parks and Rec tentative Budget for 2023.
I'll second it.
So just a, just a further question, because I had not heard this pedestal thing yet. So where is the bind? Manufacturing, the?
Yes, it's supply chain issues. It's, when you build a 50-amp pedestal box, the bases are delivered. There's a lot of electrical components. I believe all the components to assemble them together and create a 50-amp, 30-amp, 20-amp service, they're all not there. And they believe that there'll be And they believe that they'll be ready for January. Now, I've seen things come, they've said January, and you know, we're doing the same thing for the clubhouse furniture. We're out, we're 30 weeks into furniture, and we expect delivery in late August. And that's just the reality of what's happening now. There's nothing we can do about it.
Commissioner, we're, we're having some of the same issues with the, at our fire stations with electrical panels. So, it has to do with electrical components is, is a big part of it.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Yeah, Mr. Circus, come on up.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Looking at the Park and Recreation budget, we do a pretty good job dividing out some of the, the parks that require fees, for example, the water park, the, the golf course, Sailfish, Sailfish Sands was specifically noticed for the food. My, my question is, when we take a look at these things divided out, we see expenses divided out, but we don't see any revenue put into these categories. So, for, for organizations that are being run essentially under a, an enterprise fund or a capitalistic approach, you can't just go get a free hot dog. So, why would we separate only expenses and not put in a enumeration of the revenue that's collected? This way, for budgeting purposes, you can compare what's actually coming in versus what's going out and make predictions going forward from there.
I concur. You want to?
I can answer.
I have revenues broke out on page 326 for the Parks and Rec Department.
And this for the board's edification. We, we have separate activity codes for each of the facilities, Sand Dune Cafe, Seaside, Golf Course, Water Park, et cetera. Those numbers arrive in my inbox every day. Ironically, I sent Mr. Donaldson an email last week, and for the first time, we have every single asset that we've had that produces revenue is actually in, in the black, even the mooring field, which I was surprised. It's exceptional. The Seaside Cafe is hovering low 400,000 to the positive. So, we are doing really well. We track those numbers daily. Revenue and expenses, we run them like little businesses. Stephanie knows that. But there, in this higher-level budget, you don't see that level of detail, but we certainly see it every day in parks.
I was talking about in the presentation. It would be nice to have. So, let's do this. When we come back in September, right? Maybe you can elaborate on that some, just to do a little bit different sort of end of that piece. Okay with everyone? All right. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
I made a motion.
And a second.
We have a second. Okay. Again, anybody else from the public? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Kevin, thank you. Staff, thank you very, very much for all that you do out there.
Most of them have to go back out into the heat.
You all looked really nice today.
I do.
Nice.
Work.
There must have been a memo, too, on the color of suit. That was really good. Most of them got it. Okay, sorry. Next item up is Public Works. Ms. Merle?
Okay, so, the Public Works FY23 Tentative Budget is showing a 9.3% increase. Important things to note that some capital project salaries in fringe were moved from the Capital Improvement Plan budget to the operating budget just for easier accountability of the personnel and position costs, as well as adjustments for material shortages and fuel cost increases. You're also going to see the other half of an FTE for the Eco-Tourism Outreach in the Ecosystems Division, as well as increased landscape maintenance for addition of CRA infrastructure projects. And we have Mr. Gordon and Mr. Zama here to discuss the Public Works Department goals.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning. So, this budget, it does appear to have a 9.3% increase, but the majority of that is just the offset of the salaries because we had previously had those salaries in the, on the CIP side of things, which is an accounting problem. The eight people involved, it would take more time to do the payroll for those eight people than it did for the other 160 people that we have on staff. So, with the advent of asset management and our ability to track and, and put their time on the projects in different ways, we can still account for their time. So, we get a total cost for those projects, but we no longer need to have their money coming out of the, the Capital Improvement Program. And then the other increases are really just cost of business. And then we have some new landscape sites. We've got the Golden Gate site on Dixie Highway. We've got, in front of the golf course, the Medians in that area. So, those additional sites are, are the bulk of what we're seeing on the, the increases. So, with that, do you have any questions?
Mr. Zama, you have anything?
No, I just want to reinforce what a lot of the other departments have mentioned. Just, we want to commend our staff through a lot of vacancies. We still continue to maintain our levels of service for maintenance, operations, and facilitation of projects. I do want to commend staff for pursuing grants. We take pride in, in constructing projects for anywhere from 90, or 10 to 25 to 50, 50 cents on the dollar. So, kudos to all staff.
Good. Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, this department is arguably the best-spent dollars in Martin County.
Move approval.
Wow.
Nice. Second.
That's, that's even some blushing going on.
Don't you agree?
I hope their heads don't, can, don't fit through the door.
I, I do.
Very good.
No, I just concur. They're, they knock it out of the park every time.
I, I do, too. And I, and, and we say this in different ways for each department. Whenever you call, you're the one of these gentlemen. You don't get pushback. You don't get anything. They quietly go about their day. They make the things happen that we ask them to fix for our residents. And, and again, you know, if we're doing our job, you're, you're doing your job right. That's exactly the way it should be. It should be as seamless as possible, and, and the public shouldn't necessarily have to know why it happens. It just happens, and it gets fixed. And it's because we have great staff leadership, but we also have amazing staff out in the field to pull it off and make it happen. And, you know, it, just, just the two pictures, you know, the, the things that go on in your department, the things that have to get fixed, are amazing. And, and, you know, people, people, and I'm sure everybody gets the same sort of question, you know, they, do you like your job? Do you love what you do? And like, yeah, we get to be involved in everything, you know? And, and this department is one of those departments that's involved in everything. And so, again, thank you guys for everything you do. The matching portion of the dollars is super important, George. It's great for pointing that out. You have a great staff that does that, and it makes us, it gives us the ability to do even more with the dollars that our residents give us. So, thank you again.
Hopefully, it won't rain that much.
Right? The only thing I, the only thing I'd add for this, the bullet point you have down, advocate for Everglades restoration, you know, as, as we move on, I just, hopefully we can even enforce, not enforce, that's not the right word, build upon that and do more with what we're doing. There's so many opportunities with these federal dollars that are out there. The amount of money that's being designated for Everglades restoration right now is astronomical, and it has accelerated projects at lightning speed. It's just, I, it's a conversation I think we should have again, that I just hope we're giving you all as much as you need to get done what you need to do. And if there's more, I'd certainly be welcome to have that conversation. Like that, we have a motion. We have a second. Anybody from the public want to weigh in on this item? Seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
George? Jim, thank you. Next item up is Public Works. Mr. Emerson. Stephanie?
Utilities.
I'm sorry. Utilities. I didn't cross that one off yet.
FY23 Tentative Budget for Utilities and Solid Waste. We're showing a 5.7% increase. And as we all know, Utilities and Solid Waste is an enterprise fund. They have an increase of five FTEs, all offset by revenues, the addition of a Grants Coordinator for the Septic to Sewer Program, the addition of a Utilities Air Vac Mechanic to maintain the vacuum sewer systems. And then additionally, we're seeing a significant increase in chemical costs for the Treatment Division. And Mr. Emerson is here to discuss more.
Sam, good morning.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to be here. For the record, Sam Emerson, Utilities and Solid Waste Department. Thank you, Stephanie, for going over those bullet points. There were also two other FTEs I didn't identify here, but one is a Compliance Technician in the Laboratory of the North Plant. We divide that 50/50 with water and wastewater. And so, we currently have a Resource Worker or Contract Employee. We'd like to transition that to an FTE. So, really, the impact there is basically the fringe, the, and benefits. Also, we have two Contract Employees in the Water Treatment Plants. We would like to convert those to FTEs. What we're finding, when we can bring on a Resource Employee or a Contract Employee, we have them for a year, a year and a half. We train them the way we want them to be trained. We generally like to convert that to an FTE, particularly in somewhere like the Lab Technician or Treatment Plant Operator, which are challenging to get in this market. And so, that's our philosophy there on converting those. We've seen a significant increase in chemical costs, particularly sulfuric acid we use in water treatment. A year ago, it went up significantly to about $1.25. Currently, it's at $2.51 per gallon. So, that's a significant increase in our treatment, but that's something we have to, just have to do in order to provide safe drinking water. We want to continue to apply for grant funding. Currently, we have about $20 million in grants in hand. And the current project managers, multiple managers, try to manage that grant and administer those grants. It's getting real challenging. We'd like to spearhead that and put that under one person, which would be a Grants Coordinator, to help streamline that. And so, we don't miss anything with grant reporting and quarterly reports and deadlines. We also plan to begin construction in the Coral Gardens and Rocky Point Vacuum Sewer Systems next year toward the end of the year. We're in the design phases currently. And as far as Coral Gardens, we will be, have an item on OMB next month for permission to apply for an $8 million grant for Coral Gardens. So, that's still in the works, and we'll keep pressing on that. Other than that, it's, it's pretty much inflationary-driven. We discussed last week at the Solid Waste Initial Assessment Resolution Item, the inflationary pressures we're getting in solid waste, and our contracts have CPI adjustments. So, not to go over that discussion again, but it's primarily contractual and disposal and processing of waste that's increased the budget. And as Stephanie mentioned, it's, it's offset by revenue to balance the budget. And with that, I entertain any questions?
Good. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Emerson? Anybody from the public wish to weigh in on this item? Commissioner Hurd?
Great job. Move Tentative Approval.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Two things. There's a, there's, the conversation we have been leading certainly out of Martin County statewide, and, and it's making some significant progress at BioSolids and how we deal with BioSolids and the treatment of BioSolids. We've been incredibly successful over the last couple of years getting a term that we use, which was coined as innovative technologies included into pretty much every piece of legislation that's been dealt with over the last three or four years relative to BioSolids. There is a project looming on the horizon that is an opportunity for us here in Martin County to maybe perhaps see the first introduction of the innovative technologies that are existing that we have been working with the state on, that will take phosphorus nitrogen out of our BioSolids, all the medical waste, everything else that exists in what we produce, and dispose of it in a way that it won't be going out onto our lands, either certainly here in Martin County or in north of us and in other rural areas where we tend to see unfortunately BioSolids being spread. So, kudos to our department, kudos to the state for supporting us on this. And if this all kind of comes together, we may have the first innovator's technology system here in Martin County operating, and it will certainly deal with our waste potentially. It'll be a moneymaker for those involved in it, and it could be really super exciting. So, where are we also to on our 10-year plan? Do you know on the numbers on conversions?
We've got service available to, at the end of '26, 2026, on our current path, we'll have service available to a little over 7,000 homes.
And that was out of the 10,000 that we're left to do?
That's correct.
That's fantastic.
So, we're on target. You know, things could fluctuate going forward, but we'll just deal with it as we move along.
Commissioner Hurd?
Plus, you've been so terrific about getting grants. We got $8 million for New Monrovia, $10 million for Rocky Point. Now, you're talking about another, you're, you're.
Eight million for Coral Gardens. We've, and so, we, we just keep pushing. Hopefully, we'll be successful.
It's remarkable because these projects are so expensive. That helps so much.
But Commissioner Hurd, to your point, it is, it is, I think, when you all agreed to the strategy as the board, the policies we put in, the strategies we put in have made us incredibly competitive at the state level, which is what makes so much of a difference when you're applying for all this. And to that point, you know, the credit goes to the state for putting up as much money as they're putting into these, into these sources in the first place to allow us to, to compete with others on at the state level. And, you know, to our delegation that has supported that effort, to the governor, you know, committing to all things water, and wastewater falls under that category, we are again seeing unprecedented amounts of money available that can make this transition so much better. And at the end of the day, you know, the things that are suffering as a result, sort of like our coral reef challenge that we're consistently dealing with, we're already starting to see the benefits of all, of what's being installed. So, again, staff, thank you very much. Sam, great job.
Thank you. And if I may, real quick, I did want to thank my staff. We've got a lot of incredible talent on the professional side, on the licensed operator side, on the certified maintenance side for field maintenance, and also on treatment. Just got a great group of tradespeople and professionals, and I wanted to thank them. Also, I want to thank OMB with Micah and Jennifer Brown. They do a fantastic job supporting us and keeping us on track, tracking expenses, revenue, and making adjustments as needed. And also wanted to thank the Public Works Department. We've started out a little rocky about three years ago with the neighborhood restorations, and then your Septic to Sewer Initiative, and then with the grinder systems. But we put our heads together, sat down at the table, worked together, and, and they've been very good to work with on coordinating their drainage system work, replacements with our grinder sewer, vacuum sewer, and then coming in afterwards for asphalt paving. And it's, it's worked really well. We have to make adjustments at times, but I did want to reach out and thank the Public Works Department for their assistance.
Great, Sam. Thank you very much. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Non-departmental?
Ms. Manning, welcome back. Do I need to introduce myself again, or just, it's okay? Just want to make sure. Okay, so, non-departmental is one of, a large part of our budget as well, but it's all the expenditures that is not related to, it's specifically related to a department. So, those categories of non-departmental includes the non-departmental program, risk management, economic development, grants needs. We have debt service, budgeted transfer, and reserves. So, the total non-departmental is about $201 million. Of that, $201 million, 13% is just for non-departmental itself. Risk management is 17%. Economic development, which is the BDB, is only, it's less than a percent. Grants and aids is 3%. The budgeted transfer represents 15%, and the reserves is 41%. So, non-departmental program itself includes such expenditures as indirect costs. I remember a question about that today. And we have parks and, and parks maintenance and other charges. We have the wellness clinic program in there. We have the property insurance, the auditing and contracted services, professional services, rental and leases. And we have, in other miscellaneous, we have bank fees, child support fees, printing, repairers training, and publication. We also have our PTO and leave payout and that. And we have Boavard, no, Boavard, and, no, Boavard should not be in there, I'm sorry. We have the CRA, and it should be FPNL grant, not Boavard, because that was paid off, that was paid off. So, so, the risk management, since we're a risk adverse, the county is self-insured for property and health insurance. And economic development, those are funds that's based on our contracted, not contracted, but we have a contract with the Business Development Board to, to fund programs. fund programs. We have the grants and aids, and that includes the contracted services such as we have.
Humane Society.
Humane Society and wildlife, Tragicos Wildlife. And then the grants to the government agencies, those are unfunded mandates, Florida statutes, we have some, you know, driven by Florida statutes, and local ordinances. Then we have the grants to private organizations and other aid to grant organizations. So, as far as funding for, for FY23, all the contracted services remain the same. There were no changes to that. And to our governmental agency, there were no changes or adjustments. And to private organizations, did you want me to list them, or just, it's okay? All right. So, all right, so, no change to the private organizations as well. And the only change that we had in other organizations was the Dory Slasberg, which we, we only project those dollars because it's based on drunk driving and they find, sort of fines. And so, we have not seen a large amount right now, so we project it, and if it goes up, we do provide additional funding for the schools. And then, the debt service, those are all our, we have, all our obligations that we have, obligated, all the obligations to debt service. And I want to also mention that this year, we paid off three outstanding debt service, which is utilized in one-time funding. So, there are some that were due like five years from now or three years from now, and I paid off three of them so far this year. And then, the budgeted transfer is just movement of funding. So, I might move fund from the general fund to the debt service to pay for the obligation. I mentioned earlier, we had in our presentation, the reserves, that includes various reserves for various funding sources. And with that, that's the full non-departmental. Is there any questions? I would be glad to answer.
Any questions from Ms. Manning? Anybody from the public wish to discuss this item? Seeing none, back to the board.
Move approval of non-departmental.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second for tentative approval for non-departmental. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All who opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jennifer, thank you.
Okay, so, at this point, I'm going to provide the mileage. Yeah.
Fantastic.
Good job! Yeah.
It's astounding.
I certainly had the pleasure of working with Ms. Krista.
Your mic's off. Come on up.
Thank you. I'll get used to that eventually. I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Krista on, you know, working with her on setting the goals of how we put together the budget, but, and so, it was, obviously, this does not put together in a week. And we start actually talking about the budget in January, February. So, it's not long after it's adopted before you're already thinking about what's going to have to happen the next year.
Well, and I think we should pause there too for a second. We've, I, we have talked about our other departments. There's also, behind the scenes of what makes all this happen, the Office of Management and Budget is world-class.
And we have a phenomenal staff.
You guys do an amazing job. You always have the answers, whatever you're asked, and if you don't have it, it's instantaneously found, and we are in great stead with what you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You make us look good.
And thanks, our great staff, again, you know, without them, we wouldn't be successful, you know? Thanks. All right, so, this is just a mileage sheet for the taxing authorities. And for the countywide taxing authority, we decreased by 3.495%. The MSGUs, fire rescue, decreased by 1.9%. The parks and recs decreased by 2.41%. Stormwater decreased by 6.74%. An increase in the road MSGU by 3.38, and that's mainly because we had to redistribute salaries.
And the gas tax.
From, from gas tax reduction. And then, the other, the commission district, oh, I should stop for a second and just say, overall, between the MSGUs and the countywide, it's a negative 1.8, say 1.9% decrease.
2.9?
No, sorry. It's a 2.953 decrease. And then, for the commission MSGUs and the special district, we, we have 7.155 decrease. And so, at this point, the board can either approve this mileage as presented, or if you have questions, I can, you know.
Okay. So, if there's any questions at this point from where we are, that would be the time. I had one more thought, and I just lost it. Nope, I don't know where it is. So, you need a, a tentative approval for the budget and mileage as presented?
Yes, for all the mileages.
For all the mileages. I will make a motion for the approval of the tentative, all the tentative mileages presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the final motion? Seeing none, back to the board. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All who opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Excellent job, you guys.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Anything else that we need to do?
Now, at this point, we will come back to the board for first public hearing in September.
In September, correct?
Yes.
And the only other thing is, from the adoption of the tentative approval for today, that will set our trim notices, correct?
Correct.
And we will not be able to go up, but if there was.
We can go down, but we can.
We cannot go up, but we can go down. Anybody from the public wish to comment? This is our 5:05 at 11:35. Yes, ma'am? Come on up.
I'm here for the Medical Examiner's Office.
Well, this is our public comment, and if you would like to take three minutes, you're more than welcome to.
I am Kimberly Carroll, Operations Manager for the Medical Examiner's Office. I'm glad to be here. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Veronica, who sincerely regrets she cannot be here, but as I speak, she is in Lakeland testifying at a legal matter for our office. So, I wanted to go over a couple of things about our budget. Our, our proposed budget is $3.1 million. Our budget includes three things. It's the addition of four additional positions, a new database, and our operational expenses have increased. The four new positions that we are asking for is one full-time doctor, one part-time doctor, a full-time forensic clerk, and a full-time medical records clerk. We're a very small office, and the volume and complexity of cases that are coming through our office have increased. Dr. Veronica's predecessor, Dr. Mittelman, has, all his cases have been left to her to testify or take care of, so she's dealing with that as well as her, her regular duties. So, those four positions would really help an already taxed office. A database, we currently have no database for our office, and it is crucial for our office to have a secure database to house all the medical, the biometric, autopsy photographs, everything that needs to be secure. We need a database for that. We're asking for $245 for the initial purchase of the database, and then it would be annually $60,000 to maintain it. But the one-time purchase for the $245 is just the one-time purchase. That is not a reoccurring purchase. All of our goods and services have went up. Our mortgage supplies have went up. Our transport company has raised the price to transport our cases, and our janitorial services, which we used to, Indian River State College would provide to us for free, they are no longer doing that for us. So, that has been absorbed into our budget. Our medical waste has increased. So, those are all things that, you know, with inflation, with our caseload, everything has went up. As I said before, we are a small office. We do not have a grants department, but that does not stop us from applying for grants. We do apply for grants. We have one currently through the Department of Justice. We are getting ready to submit another one, and I believe we had two, two other ones that we, we applied for and we were awarded. We were able to go in and amend the, the, the original proposed amount to phase in two of the asking positions, and that was a full-time doctor and a full-time forensic technician. By doing that, we were able to bring the asking amount down to 2.9 million, and it's a 30.30% increase overall. For Martin County's portion, it would be $657,738, which is a 34.14% increase. I would be more than glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Anybody, any questions? Commissioner Campy?
Thank you. Just to our staff, the numbers that we just heard, that's already put into our approved. How long have you been with the office?
13 years.
Okay, so, you knew Dr. Mittelman, obviously.
I knew Dr. Mittelman very well.
Yeah, he was a friend of mine as well, and very friendly with his family. Yes, well, you know, sadly, when you said that the new doctor has taken over, Mr. Mittelman, Dr. Mittelman retired and then passed away. So, the cases that have been taken over by his predecessor, she doesn't even have the ability to contact him to ask questions of like how it happened. So, I can imagine it's a daunting task. So, just to let you know, this morning, when we approved the other constitutional and governmental budgets, your budget was approved as part of that as well. So, but it's nice of you to come forward and explain what it is. I'm sure we'll be having a lot of interaction between us and the office in, in the coming months. Thank you so much.
We really appreciate all of your support and, you know, what we do is, we understand it's not a service that everyone likes to know about, but it is a service that's necessary. And, you know, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Veronica as our new chief, and her mission is to make sure that our families are continued to be taken care of, and their families, and our cases, their loved ones that come in through our office. You know, it's, it's, it's not an easy job, and our office does a really well job of making sure that everything gets done and families are taken care of at their, you know, their worst day of their life, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, with that, we have reached the end of our meeting. We, Commissioner Hurd?
I have one more comment, and just a summary from my point of view. This is the one opportunity that we have every year to have each of our department heads appear before us, and I always wonder which department head has the worst job. They're all so complex. They're responsible for their operations, they're responsible for their budgeting, and I, and I know that this, this hearing was brief, but I can assure you, I examined every page of this budget and, you know, looked for wasteful spending, and I, I, I am in complete support of this. I want the Martin County taxpayers to know that their tax dollars are being spent wisely, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could add to that, the interesting part, as Commissioner Hurd just said, this, this budget across all of the different departments is very technical, there's a lot of moving parts. But I was reviewing it as though I was a citizen and just interested, and we have Mr. Circus here. Some people are interested in, in seeing how this works. Either they're interested in the budget process, or they really want to know how their tax dollars are going. I like the fact that there, I, I use the electronic version, that there was a lot of explanation in the beginning of it, in the introduction, that really explained to people how this thing worked out, so that I felt it was user-friendly. It wasn't so loaded with, you know, hidden details and bureaucracy that the average citizen that is interested wouldn't be able to follow along if they, if they wanted to. So, I appreciate that as well, because if you're not into accounting and, you know, and these kind of issues, this can be a daunting book. I like what Commissioner Hurd said. It feels like we sort of just rubber-stamped this today, but there's so much time and effort and meetings that go through this before today. Today's workshop is basically to do what we did. And as Commissioner Hurd said, we used to take four days to do this, and I think it's not that we're trying to speed through it. I think that the process has been redesigned and re-engineered in such a way that it doesn't require four days to do it anymore. That's back in the days when it was loaded with questions and problems and, and issues. So, congratulations to you and your department.
Thanks.
Don, did you have a light on again?
I, I think it's been on all day.
It was hiding behind my computer, so.
I'd certainly, you know, Jennifer and Stephanie have done an awesome job through this, and as you already pointed out, each department has put together a, a budget with some direction early on from administration, and, you know, as a set of a goal to just do the minimum is necessary to, to maintain level of service. We're fortunate that the tax base grew enough that we're able to do, I think, a significant reduction in our mileage compared to our counterparts, and so, and, and achieve major initiatives like the Sheriff's Camera Program and others. So, I think it's a, a testament to Martin County is, is slow and steady. Thank you.
Great. We are adjourned.